Do you want to roll call first, or roll call?
Vera. Vera. Goods.
Yeah.
Carlson.
Here.
Ding Felder.
Here.
Petrow.
Petrow.
Here.
And Miranda.
Here.
And Maniscalco.
Here. All right, Mr. Shelby.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the Tampa City Council. I'm Martin Shelby, the City Council Attorney. Tonight's meeting, Thursday, October 1st of 2020, is being scheduled to conduct quasi judicial hearings and other land use matters using communications media technology due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This virtual meeting is being held in accordance as amended and extended originally by Executive Order 20-69, and amended and extended by EO 20-246, just signed by the Governor yesterday, and by the emergency rules of procedure as adopted and amended by the City Council. As I said, it's being conducted by video teleconferencing, which is remote participation referred to by the state of Florida and statutes as communication media technology, otherwise known as CMT. And tonight, the public and the citizens of the city of Tampa are able to watch, listen, and view this meeting on Spectrum Channel 640, Frontier Channel 15, and on the internet at www.tampagov.net/livestream, one word. Now, council, the public has been able to arrange for the ability to participate. One way is by written material, either via email or US mail. And those written material that have been received by the deadline have been provided to City Council and uploaded to the hearing agenda at tampagov.net/agendas. Now, they are also able to participate live this evening by registering or having registered in advance to speak live via CMT. And those instructions were available and are available in the future online at tampagov.net/quasi, Q-U-A-S-I. Now, those people who don't have communication media technology have public access to a CMT device, and they may utilize the facilities located tonight at the Tampa Convention Center, 333 South Franklin Street in Tampa. Again, Mr. Chairman, that is all that I have, and I turn the meeting back to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shelby. Before we begin with the agenda, Mary Samaniego, do we have any housekeeping or anything to look at?
No, sir. Mary Samaniego, we are ready to proceed.
All right, we will start with item number one. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing for items 1 through 10? We have a motion from Councilman Gooz, second from Councilman Miranda. Any objection? Hearing none by unanimous consent. The public hearings are open. Let's begin with item number one.
Jennifer from Local Planning Commission staff, may I share my screen? This is Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1920. It's located in the South Tampa Planning District. It's several parcels comprising of the Memorial Hospital south of West Dalian Street, north of West Swan Avenue, and South Vienna Avenue kind of runs right through the parcel. This is a privately initiated small-scale amendment at approximately 8.78 acres from Public Semi Public Community Commercial 35, Community Mixies 35 and Residential 20. And this comprehensive plan would bring the entire site into a unified public semi-public future land use designation. I have some site pictures. This is the hospital, these are the streets. This is the parking lot on the northern side of West Dalian Street. This is another portion of the parking lot. And then this is facing west towards the main hospital building there in the distance on the left-hand side of the screen. And this is one of the medical offices in the surrounding area, the corner of South Vienna and West Dalian. The adopted future land use, as I said before, has several different categories. There's the Publix Semi Public, which is the blue. The Residential 20, which is the darker brown. Community Commercial 35 on the red, and Community Mixies 35 in the pink color. To the south is Residential 6. That is a single-family detached neighborhood to the south. West Swan Avenue is a defining border between this neighborhood and the neighborhood to the south. And then this amendment would take the entire subject site to the Publix Semi Public. So this would remove the potential for about 188 dwelling units and approximately 4,000 square feet of non-residential. There is no maximum in the Publix Semi Public. But the amendment, we would look at the surrounding area when it comes in for zoning and make sure that the request is compatible. And so this is consistent with the comprehensive plan because the Publix Semi Public designation does support public uses, which includes hospitals. The comprehensive plan does seek to complement Tampa's neighborhoods, however. I would also state that non-residential uses are encouraged to remain specifically compatible to the surrounding neighborhood. But this hospital has been in the neighborhood for approximately 40 years. And as long as the hospital keeps these policies in mind, the zoning and et cetera, then that is our consistency finding, and the planning commission did find this consistent with the plan, and I am available for your questions.
All right, thank you very much. Next up? All right, who's next?
The applicant should be here to do a presentation, correct?
Do we have the applicant logged in?
I do not have any registration as far as the applicant is concerned.
Anything from the city?
The city found this had no objections to this request.
Mr. Shelby?
It's rather unusual that we wouldn't have an applicant here. It's a first reading. Even if there were public comment, I don't think it would be appropriate to take public comment in the absence of an applicant.
Why don't we dump it to the end of the meeting?
All right, why don't we hold it, and perhaps somebody from staff can reach out to the applicant, or somebody from...
Excuse me, give me one second. I have someone in the attendee line stating that they are the applicant. They just did not reference that.
And then we'll swear them in once they log in?
You don't even have to, council. This is a non-quasi judicial proceeding.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Can we see you, sir?
Can you turn your camera on, please?
Certainly.
There we go.
I thought I registered as the applicant. My apologies. First of all, I just want to thank Jennifer for working with us and city staff. I know things have been a little crazy with the coronavirus and protests and so forth. So thank you for hearing our item this evening. Really don't have a whole lot else to add to Jennifer's presentation, only that really put a fine point is the hospital's interested in making sure that all the land uses are consistent on their campus, and make sure that it's consistent with the type of use that it is currently and what it may be in the future. They understand that if they do have improvements that they want to do, that it'll need to be consistent with the new land use, and that they'll have to come back and likely do a plan development rezoning, in which case you'll see a site plan and a master plan for their campus. So nothing really else to add, but we do confer with the staff's report and are available for any questions.
Any questions from council members? Hearing none. Do we have anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this item? Item number one.
Move to close, Mr. Chairman.
Wait, wait, wait.
No one has registered to speak on this item.
Okay, anybody at the Tampa Convention Center?
This is Eileen Dosario from Planning and Development, and there's no one here to speak on this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a motion closed from Councilman Miranda. Do we have a second?
Just to make sure, just for the record, is there any written material on this item?
No written comments were received for this item.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Motion closed from Councilman Miranda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Gooz. Any objection? Hearing none by unanimous consent. The hearing is closed. Councilman Miranda, would you mind reading the substitute evidence for item?
Right around the chairman's back, Mr. Chairman. File number one, file number PA 19-20, I move substitute orders being presented for first reading consideration. An ordinance amending the image 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element, Future Land Use Map for the property generated located at 2901 West Swan Avenue, 2618 West Dalian Street, 2916 West Dalian Street, Public Semi Public, P/SP Community Commercial 35, DC-35 Community Mixed Use 35, CMU 35, and Residential residential 20 R22 Public Semi Public, P/SP Providing a repeal of all ordinances and conflict, providing for an effective date, providing that effective date. Second.
Do we have a second? Second from Councilman Vera. Ms. Wells, yes?
Thank you. Just to clarification with regard to that third address, it's 2619 West Dalian rather than 2916. Thank you.
2619.
2619, okay.
Okay. We have a problem. Motion from Councilmember Miranda with a second from Councilmember Vera. Let's have roll call, please.
Vera.
Yes.
Gooz.
Yes.
Ding Felder.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Petrow.
Yes.
And Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be held on November 5th at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you very much.
Yes, council, when we move on, just so you know that, and this is not related to this hearing, but it's related to the when the second reads are going to be scheduled. As you know, the Governor's Executive Order that was signed last night is only through the month of October, and the Governor's Office gave clear indication that local governments should prepare to not have that extended into November. So it raises the question of how we're going to move forward in November. So I just want council to know that what we are doing as we move into November is to bring back second readings for the morning meetings. So whatever effect that has, in planning our meetings as we move forward, we just have to remember that there will be second reads again scheduled for the morning. And I just wanted to bring that to council's attention, so you're aware of that. Thank you.
Just like the old days.
And Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, sir. Councilman Vera.
You have to excuse me for five minutes. I have some technological challenges, as I often do. I have to switch computers and hopefully, my long story, as it always is, just give me five minutes. I mean, continue forwards, but just FYI.
Okay, thank you very much. Item number two. Can you share my screen, please?
Good evening. This is Danny Collins with the Planning Commission staff. This is Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendment 2003. Before we get started, I wanted to make a correction for the record. On page 10 of our staff analysis, it says, "Building heights will be subject to design standards by the Architectural Review Committee." This is incorrect. Building heights are established by the zoning. City legal clarified this issue with us, and this issue does not affect the consistency finding of the planning commission. So I just wanted to clarify that for the record before I get started.
All right, thank you very much. Go ahead, sir.
Again, this is Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendment 2003. Subject site is in the central Tampa Planning District. It's within the historic Ebor neighborhood and within the Ebor City Urban Village. This went in front of the BLC on July 28th, and they recommended approval to City Council. Here is an aerial of the subject site and the surrounding properties. You'll see the subject site. It's outlined in this black color. It's at the northwest corner of North 17th Street and East Palm Avenue. The, directly to the south of the subject site is HCC, the Ebor City Campus. The Hilton Garden Inn in Tampa is directly to the north or the southeast of the subject site. And then, if you're familiar with the Bainbridge Ebor City Apartments, it's one block to the north of the subject site, and then Interstate 4 is a couple blocks to the north. This is an image looking west of the subject site from North 17th Street. This is another image looking west, standing at the intersection of North 17th and East Palm Avenue. The subject site would be on our right. This is looking northwest from that intersection, North 17th and East Palm Avenue. This is an image looking north at the subject site from East Palm Avenue. This is standing on the subject site, looking south across East Palm Avenue. This is part of the HCC campus. Quick background, this is a privately initiated request. It's a small-scale amendment. The subject site is approximately 1.35 acres. The request is to change the future land use from the Residential 50 and right-of-way categories to the urban mixed-use 60. Approximately 1.1 acres of the subject site is under that Residential 50, and approximately 1.7 acres is within that right-of-way category. This is the adopted future land use map shown the subject site outline in the black color. You'll see a majority of the sites within that Residential 50 category. This little sliver to the south is within that, is within the, is right-of-way. Directly to the south of the subject site, you'll see UMU 60. To the north and east of the subject site is the Residential 50. And then you'll see some CMU 35, one block to the west of the subject site. And then you'll see CC 35, a couple blocks to the south on E67. This is the proposed future land use maps showing the subject site under the UMU 60 category. This is the slide showing the potential impacts of the proposed request. Currently, the subject site can be considered for 59 dwelling units or just over 100,000 square feet of non-residential development. As proposed under that UMU 60 category, the subject site can be considered for 81 potential dwelling units or just over 190,000 square feet of non-residential development. So you can see the proposed amendment would allow for an increase in development potential by allowing higher residential density and greater commercial intensity on the subject site. The Planning Commission reviewed the request and found it consistent with several of the policies in the comprehensive plan, specifically under the city planning strategy, development, encourage a mixed-use development in urban villages. It was consistent with the neighborhood policies and also the housing policies in the plan. Based on those considerations, the Planning Commission recommends that the proposed map amendment be not consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan. That's all I have today. And I'm available for any questions. I believe the applicant is online as well.
Do we have any questions for the gentleman? All right, hearing none. The applicant is online. I see you, Mr. Bentley.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council. My name is Mark Bentley, 401 East Jackson Street, Tampa, 33602. I haven't been sworn, but it's a legislative proceeding, Martin, so I don't think that's necessary. In any event, I think Danny did a very thorough job covering the amendment. The property is owned by Capco Parking LLC. It's one of the corporations that's owned and controlled by the Capitano family. The approval, if you saw in the summary, would allow an additional 22 units at the subject site. The intent is to redevelop the property for residential multifamily development. The subject property is also subject to the jurisdiction of the Barrio Latino Commission, so they'll have authority to weigh in in terms of the exterior design. As Danny noted, in terms of the height, that's, that relates to the YC zoning district that applies to the subject property, which I think is 60 feet. The proposal has been reviewed by scrutinized by four reviewers at this point in time. First, the Planning Commission staff, they issued a positive report recommendation to the Planning Commission, and subsequently to, obviously, City Council. Then the Planning Commission, at its June 4th public hearing unanimously recommended City Council finding a consistency in adoption. Next was the Barrio Latino Commission. I think that was a month or two ago. There was unanimous recommendation, City Council adopt the change. And also your planning staff with Mary Samaniego, she issued a memorandum, I think, on March 11, 2020. It's in your backup, finding the proposed amendment consistent with the City of Tampa Comprehensive Plan. And so, a good summation of the reports found on page 10 of the Planning Commission report, and I'll just paraphrase, it says, it concludes that the request would allow for development that is comparable and compatible with the surrounding area, and the additional density increase fits the vision expressed in the policies of the comprehensive plan. So that about sums it up. If you have any questions or concerns, I'll gladly address them.
Do we have any questions for the petitioner or the applicant? Councilman Ding Felder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Bentley. The project, the apartments to the north of your proposed project, and I think it appeared to me that it directly abuts as a, I believe, a senior subsidized residential facility. Can't remember the name of it. Is that correct?
Yeah, I don't know all the facts, Councilman. I think it's called La hacienda, or maybe Mr. Miranda might win, he knows.
Joe and I used to deliver meals on wheels, so we had, we had clients in that building, right, Joe? Anyway, I have a little bit of concern about, you know, how close this, this, I mean, obviously, we're not looking at a site plan at this, at this stage, but you probably, you probably have one coming pretty soon. But I'm a little concerned, you know, just about buffering and, and any adverse impacts on the senior, the senior residential project, you know, adjacent.
Yeah, I know. It's kind of tough at this stage of the game, the land use. I mean, you know, the issue is whether or not the land use is appropriate, that location subject to performance standards, which in this case, I mentioned before, not only just the general city codes of the Barrio Latino Commission.
Well, you mentioned it. You make a good point, Mark. Can somebody on staff confirm that, that there's a 60-foot height limit at that location, regardless of the UMU status?
I don't have the code in front of me. Maybe Mary's listening to this, and she's in her office. Could pull it up.
My, my understanding, council, is that she's been, there she is. Okay.
I don't understand the question. Please repeat it.
Mary.
Yeah, there's a barrier of a height limit at this location that Mark Bentley's applying for the UMU 60?
Mary, the YC zoning, what's the height limit as it relates to the property? Would you know?
I can't tell you that because, I mean, there's a variety of zoning districts that's allowed in UMU 60.
What would be the, what would be the highest, the highest one?
Okay, one moment. You have to give me a moment. I have to see all the different zoning districts that are allowed in that category first. A moment.
John, the discussion why Mary's looking at the Barrio Latino is... the typical height is sixty feet, the max in Ebor City. And they were concerned that it wouldn't exceed sixty. So I stipulated on the record it wouldn't exceed sixty. We're probably going to do is go through what they call Y C nine rezoning, which is the equivalent of a P D for Ebor City.
I'm not sure that your stipulation works in the
No.
in the land use, but
My point is we'll be seeing you again because we need to rezone the property. So your concerns about buffering and setbacks will be before city council again. So you'll have a good look at it.
Are you speaking?
No, there's unfortunately, I'm in my office tonight, but.
Mary. Eric has their hand up.
Mary, and then Marty.
Maniscalco, Mr. Maniscalco, thank you. Given all of the possible zoning districts that could be rezoned after the UMU sixty is approved, sixty feet is the maximum height.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Bentley.
Mr. Shaw.
No, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that staff had the opportunity to address Councilman Ding Felder's question for the record. Thank you.
Councilman Vera, can you hear us? Are you still, can you unmute yourself or you have audio issues? All right, Councilman Vera has some audio issues. You're good? Okay, you can, can you hear us? Okay, at least he can hear us.
He might be able to, he might be able to, and I guess he can get in touch with with Eric and perhaps he might be able to phone in, use his video and use his audio by phone. But I think that's something that you'll have to work out. Should we hold should we hold this for your question, Councilman Vera? No, is what you're signaling.
Take a Charlie Chaplin film. All right, do we have any other questions before we go to public comment? Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item, item number two?
No one has registered to speak on this item and we have not received any written comments on this item.
And how about the convention center?
This is I lean to study from planning and development and there's no one here to speak on this item. Thank you.
All right, can we get a motion to close this item unless Miranda, second from Councilman Citro, any objection to closing this hearing? Hearing none and by unanimous consent, the hearing is now closed. Councilman Citro, if you would not mind taking on number two.
With pleasure. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. File number P A twenty dash three. An ordinance amending image twenty forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Future land use element, future land use map for the property generally located at the northwest corner of East Palm Avenue and North Seventeenth Street. From residential fifty R fifty and right of way row to urban mixed use sixty. U M U sixty, providing for appeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing for an effective date.
Second, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great.
We have a second. Roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Boots.
Yes.
Ding Felder.
Yes.
Miranda. Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
And Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be held on November fifth at nine thirty A M.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, item number three.
Jennifer Malone with your planning commission staff, can I share my screen? These are the a group of parks coming before you that'll bring those into performance with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. Again, this is a these were these were initiated by Tampa City Council to recognize the parks and each park is on the dedicated parks list. The first one is Freedom Park. It's located in the central Tampa Planning District as well as in Riverside Heights neighborhood. It's at West Kentucky Avenue and Poplar Avenue. It's a gorgeous neighborhood park. The land use is residential ten and the proposed is recreational open space. This removes the potential for anything other than a park on the subject site and need to find this consistent with the plan.
Very much. Thank you. All right. Any questions or comments? Anyone else? All right, do we have any, we don't have an applicant on this. So do we have public comment? Anybody in the public wish to speak on item number three?
No one has registered to speak on this item and we have not received any written comments on this item.
All right, anybody at the convention center?
This is I lean to study of planning and development. There's no one here to speak on this item. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Motion to close. Motion to close from Councilman Good, second from Councilman Miranda, any objection? Hearing none by unanimous consent, the hearing is now closed. Councilmember Carlson, would you mind reading item number three?
Sure, thank you, Chair. File number P A two zero dash zero five ordinance being presented for first reading consideration ordinance, admitting the imagine twenty forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan, future land use element, future land use map for the property generally located at thirty seven North Poplar Street, Poplar Avenue and otherwise known as Freedom Park or from residential ten R ten to recreational open space R O S. Providing for all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing effective date.
Second from Councilmember Miranda, roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Boots.
Yes.
Ding Felder.
Yes.
Miranda. Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
And Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be held on November fifth at nine thirty A M.
All right, thank you very much. Next up is item number four.
Item number four is Plan Amendment twenty six, Jennifer Malone with your planning commission. This is within the central Tampa Planning District in the Tampa Heights Urban Village. It is Calvin Taylor Park. It's located just north of the Woodlawn Cemetery and East to North Boulevard. It has some wonderful park amenities and Little League Field. The adopted land use is residential ten. And the proposed is the recreational open space, which is the green color. Again, this would remove any potential for a use that is not a park on the subject site. And it would promote the recreation open space opportunities and the planning commission did find it consistent.
All right. Do you have any questions or comments? Again, no applicant here. Do you have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item, item number four?
No one has registered to speak on this item and we have not received any written comments on this item.
Thank you very much. Convention Center?
This is I lean to study of planning and development and there's no one here to speak on this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Chairman, close.
Motion closed from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilmember Good's. Any objection? By unanimous consent, the hearing is now closed. Councilmember Ding Felder, would you mind reading item number four?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Item number four in regard to file P A twenty dash zero six, an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration. An ordinance amending the Imagine twenty forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan, future land use element, future land use map for the property generally located at six eleven West Indiana Avenue and otherwise known as Calvin Taylor Park. Residential ten R ten to resident recreation, open space R O S. Providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
We have a most Councilman Ding Felder, second Councilmember Miranda, roll call vote, please.
Vera.
Yes.
Boots.
Yes.
Ding Felder.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
And Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be held on November fifth at nine thirty A M.
Thank you very much. Item number five.
Item number five is Plan Amendment twenty oh seven. Again, Jennifer Malone with your planning commission staff. This is Giddens Park, which is located in Seminole Heights Urban Village, east of North Nebraska Avenue, south of East Hillsborough Avenue. This is, there's some site pictures of Giddens Park. The adopted land use is residential ten and the proposed is recreational open space. Again, this would remove any potential for a use that is not a park on the subject site. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan policies to promote recreation, open space opportunities, and the planning commission did find it consistent.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions? All right, there's no applicant. Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item?
No one has registered to speak on this item and we have not received any written comments on this item.
And the convention center?
This is I lean to study of planning and development and there's no one here to speak on this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions or comments from Councilman before we get a motion to close the public hearing?
We'll move it to chairman.
Your motion, Miranda, with the second from Councilmember Good's. Any objection? Hearing none and by unanimous consent, the hearing is closed. Councilmember Good's, would you mind reading item number eight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. File number P A twenty dash zero seven, ordinance represented for first reading considerations. An ordinance amending the Imagine twenty forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan, future land use element. Future land use map for the property generally located at fifty two oh two and fifty two oh nine North Twelfth Street, otherwise known as Giddens Park. From residential ten R ten to residential open space R dash oh six. Providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing severability, providing effective date.
Do we have a second? Second from Councilman Citro, roll call vote.
Vera.
Yes.
Boots.
Yes.
Ding Felder.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
And Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be held on November fifth at nine thirty A M.
All right, item number six.
Jennifer Malone with your planning commission. Item number six is twenty oh eight, which is Reagan Park, located in central Tampa Planning District in the east Tampa Urban Village. It is just north of East Lake Avenue, south of, sorry, it's on the north side of East Lake Avenue, south of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. It has a community center and a lovely walking park or walking trail around the lake in the back. The adopted future land use is residential ten and the proposed is the recreational open space. Which would remove any potential for pieces that are not a park on the subject site. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the planning commission found this consistent.
All right, do we have any questions? Hearing none, we do not have an applicant for this. Do we have anybody for public comment that wishes to speak?
No one has registered to speak on this item nor we have any written comments on this item.
All right, anybody at the convention center?
I lean to study of planning and development and there's no one here to speak on this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there are no further questions, may I have a motion to close this item, item number six? We have motion closed from Councilman Miranda, second from Councilmember Good's. Any objection? Hearing none, the hearing is now closed. Councilman Vera, would you mind taking the substitute for item number six?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I'll do it. I hereby read a substitute ordinance being presented for first reading. Consideration ordinance amending Imagine twenty forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan, future land use element, future land use map for the property generally located at twelve hundred East Lake Avenue, otherwise known as Reagan Park, from residential ten R ten to recreational open space R slash O S. Providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second? A second from Councilmember Miranda. Let's get a roll call vote, please.
Vera.
Yes.
Boots.
Yes.
Ding Felder.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
And Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be held on November fifth at nine thirty A M.
Thank you very much. Item number seven.
Jennifer Malone with your planning commission. Item number seven is Herman Massey Park twenty oh nine. This is located in the central Tampa Planning District within downtown River Arts neighborhood. It is on the east. Yeah, it's next to Franklin Street and East Harrison Avenue in downtown. This is a picture of the subject site. Another one from North Franklin Street. This is within the central business district, which is also an adopted future land use designation. So the proposed would be the recreational open space. There is no density or intensity limit in the central business district, which are land use designation that is guided by the Land Development Code criteria. Regardless, this would remove any any development that would not be a park on the subject site. And again, it is consistent with the plan and the planning commission also found this consistent. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Hearing none, we have no applicant. Do we have anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this item?
No one has registered to speak on this item and we have not received any written comments on this item.
Okay. Do we have any at the convention center?
I lean to study of planning and development and there's no one here to speak on this item. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. If there are no more questions, we have motion closed.
Move.
Motion closed from Councilmember Miranda with second from Councilmember Good's. Is there any objection to that closed public hearing? Hearing none by unanimous consent, the public hearing is now closed. Councilmember Miranda, would you mind reading item number seven?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move item number seven, file number P A twenty dash oh nine. Continue, this is the ordinance being presented for first reading consideration ordinance amending the image twenty forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan, future land use element, future land use map for the property generally located at ten ten North Franklin Street and otherwise known as Herman Massey Park. From central district, district CBD to recreation, open space, R O S. Providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
We have a second. Second from Councilmember Citro, I believe. Roll call vote, please.
Vera.
Yes.
Boots.
Yes.
Ding Felder. Ding Felder.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
And Maniscalco.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be held on November fifth at nine thirty A M.
All righty, we go on to item number eight.
Jennifer Malone with your planning commission staff. Item number eight is twenty ten. This is the Tampa Park Plaza, located in the central Tampa Planning District and the central park Urban Village. It is somewhat of a diamond shape, located east of North Nebraska Avenue. This is West Scott Street and we have multifamily to the south. These are some pictures of the park. It is an adopted community mixed use thirty five, future land use designation, and the proposed would be the recreational open space. Again, this would remove any dwelling units or square square footage potential on the subject site and the only use could be a park. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan and the planning commission found it consistent with the comprehensive plan as well, and I'm available for any questions.
Do we have any questions? All right, no questions. We have no applicant. Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number eight?
No one has registered to speak on this item and we have not received any written comments on this item.
All righty, anybody at the convention center?
I lean to study of planning, planning and development. There's no one here to speak on this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there are no further questions from council members, can I have a motion to close this public hearing?
Chairman.
Your motion, Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilmember Good's. Any objection? Hearing none by unanimous consent, the public hearing is now closed. Councilmember Citro, would you mind taking item number eight?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. File number P A twenty dash ten. An ordinance being presented for first reading consideration. Ordinance amending the image twenty forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan, future land use element, future land use map for the property generally located as thirteen fourteen Scott Street. Otherwise known as Tampa Park Plaza. for the property generally located as 1314 Scott Street, and otherwise known as Tampa Park Plaza from Community Mixed Use 35, CMU 35, recreational open space ROS, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
From Councilmember Goode's. Roll call vote.
Vera?
Yes.
Goode's?
Yes.
Dean Felder?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
And Maniscalco?
Yes.
Motion carry unanimously, second reading and adoption will be held on November 5th at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. All right. Next up, we have item number nine, and uh, I see Mr. Hay.
Good evening. Let me fix my screen. Let's try this again. There we go. You see my screen?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good, good evening, councilmembers. David Hay with your planning commission staff. Um, this next amendment is a text amendment. It's TACPA 20 dash O2. A little background about the request originally proposed by City of Tampa staff under amendment TACPA 19 dash O6. Uh, the amendment, though approved by the planning commission by a nine to one vote, was eventually withdrawn by city staff when requested by Tampa City Council to do additional public outreach. City staff stated that at that time, they did not have the resources to do additional public outreach. A private applicant has now brought the same request as TACPA 1906 back to you this evening for your review. Currently, certain vertical mixed-use development along arterial roadways can qualify for a by right FAR of a 1.5 when meeting specific criteria. The criteria includes minimum acreage, frontage requirements, and the inclusion of two separate uses, such as residential and commercial, in a vertical integrated structure. Any development can then enter into a bonus agreement uh, with the city to then be considered for a maximum of a two FAR. In contrast, all development on the city's collector roadways uh, located within the CMU 35 and the CC 35, uh, future land use categories is capped at a one FAR by right, with the option to enter into that development agreement to get to a maximum of two. Some developers have stated that this requirement reduces the financial viability of constructing mixed-use development, which is the identified preferred development pattern along the city's mixed-use quarters. This proposed amendment would reduce the potential for the need to enter into a bonus agreement uh, with the city for development meeting specific requirements up to that 1.5 FAR, thus further incentivizing the preferred identified development pattern of that vertical mixed-use on the city's main quarters. All maximum FARs would remain the same, and all proposed development would still need to seek city council approval. There are no changes to that. Uh, this amendment would extend the existing incentive on the city's arterial roadways to collector roadways within the city of Tampa's designated urban villages. Urban villages are identified in the adopted comprehensive plan as unique areas of the city of Tampa that have had an adopted secondary planning process, such as a neighborhood plan, uh, economic development plans, or are recognized as community development areas. The comprehensive plan, specifically land use policy 5.1.2, directs the city to seek ways to make it easier to develop in a compact mixed-use form within these urban villages. This proposed amendment provides an additional tool for the city to do that. The comprehensive plan, specifically land use policy 8.14.1, directs the city to, quote, "continue to streamline development regulations to remove unnecessary requirements or delays in improving and permitting residential development." Typically, mixed-use contains a residential component. The planning commission found that this amendment would help remove a potential regulatory barrier to developing projects that have been identified as the preferred development pattern along the city's quarters. Here we have a map of uh, the sites that would be affected by this text change. Uh, the sites are highlighted in red, and then the dark blue lines are the collector roadways. The uh, kind of purplish areas are the identified uh, urban villages.
Which?
So you can see we have Osborne, Sly, uh, this is 34th Street, has a, a number of properties that would now, uh, there would be an incentive uh, to develop that vertical mixed-use. This uh, on the right is just a blow up of the uh, central Tampa area. Uh, next. You know, a, a number of studies have shown that vertical mixed-use development provides for a greater tax return than single-use structures. These studies were, there were studies done in Sarasota County in 2008. There was a study done in Buncombe County, which I had to look up, is Asheville, North Carolina. And then uh, the Smart Growth America uh, study uh, from 2013, looked at 17 uh, cities around uh, the country and looked at how mixed-use development provides for that greater return in tax revenue. Here, we're just looking at some examples of locally, of how mixed-use projects and the tax return that is received by the city over um, uh, single-use structures. Uh, the uses on the left are single-use, and we've averaged their tax return to the city by per acre. So you can see that these are just examples of how the vertical mixed-use, whether it's older or newer, uh, has a tendency to provide that greater tax base. Uh, as usual, this did go to our, all our partner agencies, and there were no objections from any of the reviewing agencies. The planning commission has reviewed the comprehensive plan and found that the proposed language to amend the CMU 35 and the Community Commercial 35, future land use category, is consistent with the adopted policy guidance within that comprehensive plan. Your planning commission found two main areas of consistency with the comprehensive plan. The first are policies dealing with the promotion of mixed-use development pattern along the city's uh, main quarters. These policies generally discuss the promotion of that vertical mixed-use pedestrian-oriented development and the city's long-range goal of shifting the majority of the city's quarters away from the auto-oriented dominated pattern of the past to a more balanced approach, providing corridors that are safe for walking and cycling, with buildings oriented toward public rice away, with typically parking in the rear, but at a density and form that also supports transit usage. This. The second area are policies dealing with the promotion of a sustainable form of development within our city's urban villages. These policies discuss what makes urban villages unique. Areas in the city are, in the long range, the city can work toward creating a mix and placement of uses that works to strengthen the character of the village while also creating a vibrant community setting. Vertical mixed-use development is supportive of this goal. Um, based on that, the planning commission recommends that the proposed text amendment be found consistent with the goals of Jack policies of the Imagine 2040 Tampa Comprehensive Plan. And before I conclude my presentation, I did want to highlight uh, that the applicant has submitted a modification to the original language that removes Davis Islands uh, from uh, the consideration of this, under this text amendment. This modification narrows the scope of the amendment and would not change the planning commission's overall consistency finding. Uh, thank you, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Councilmember Goode's and Councilmember Dean Felder.
Hey, could you put back up that map of those streets?
Sure. Right.
I've got concerns. You know, I'm all about more density in certain areas of East Tampa, but some of the streets that you indicate are very high residential, single-family homes. And I'm just trying to see how the, how this comprehensive plan will fall in, especially when I think it's 34th Street you mentioned?
34th Street, yes.
Yeah, I, I'm just trying to figure out how would that work, because that area right there is, is very, very heavy residential. I can see density along the major uh, arteries of Nebraska, maybe 30th Street. Uh, you know, tho- those are uh, main roads that I think you probably could get that early, but concerned about 34th Street. And some of those inner, inner workings of smaller streets, the same, you have that kind of high density, when you have a lot of uh, single-family homes in that area.
Well, um, Mr. Councilman Goode's, I, I, I'll, I'll hopefully respond to your answer. The, remember, there is no change to the maximum FAR. So right now, on that corridor, they, a developer could come in and propose a mixed-use development at a 2.0 FAR. We're not changing the maximum. All we're, on, all under what this applicant and this request is uh, looking for, is to change the mechanism of when the trigger is that they need to start paying and going into that development agreement um, with the city. So there is no maximum. You're, that corridor is already planned. When you look at the land use map, it's got that, already that CMU 35. So it will, long-term, transition out, that was, that's the current vision of the plan, to a more vertical mixed-use. Now, will, will, any project would also need to come back to you through a zoning. This does not supersede any zoning requirements or any, anything like that. They would still need to come back for your approval for a zoning. So just because um, you know, if this amendment is approved, there's still checks in place to ensure that if a development is incompatible with properties next door or within that portion of the neighborhood, there is a tool that um, you would get to re- review it under. Um, I hope that, does it, hope that answers your question.
It did. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Dean Felder, then Councilman Citro.
And, and Vera after Citro, if I may.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Councilman Dean Felder, and then we'll go in that order.
Okay. Um, so following on to what you were asking, Councilman Goode's, um, the, there's, you know, most of the impact, or the potential impact of this is, is in East Tampa, because that's the largest, quote, urban village. Um, you know, pretty expansive, and it obviously includes some major, well, it includes a, a lot of roads, uh, 21st, Lake Osborne, parts of Hannah, Sly, those, those are the east-west, and on the north-south, uh, central, 15th and 34th at, at least.
Councilman, can I make one point while you're on that?
Well, yeah, let, let me finish, let me finish my thought. So, and, and, and I wanted to go to you on this, Mr. Hay, as well. I, I don't want us to be totally distracted by the red dots, because the red dots only represent where the current CC 35 or CMU 35 parcels are. Okay. Theoretically, arguably, if somebody was able to do a comp plan amendment, let's say at the corner of Hannah and uh, and 15th, and they did a comp plan amendment, and they were able to get the CMU 35 at that corner, all of a sudden, we'd have a new red dot. And that new red dot under this proposed um, code change or comp plan change would create an incentive. It doesn't, it doesn't expand the comp plan, as David said. The comp plan allows the 2.0 FAR. But what it does do is it creates a financial incentive for the developer to go into these, onto these uh, locations, uh, these collector roads and, and put um, bigger, you know, bigger taller buildings. They can put bigger taller buildings along there anyway, wherever they have the opportunity, but they, but this actually provides an, a financial incentive to encourage them to do that. So that's a, that's an important policy decision that council, you know, needs to explore. Um, in regard to South Tampa, um, I understand Mr. Mechanic has offered to eliminate Davis Island out of this. I would also suggest that Hyde Park and those areas uh, that are in blue, including Howard Avenue and Rome, and also South, uh, South Boulevard. Um, they're probably not the least bit interested in Hyde Park of, of creating incentives to go vertical in the, in those neighborhoods. Um, so um, and I don't think there's any incentive needed in Hyde Park for developers. They don't need a financial incentive to do anything. If they can build something in Hyde Park, then, then I'm sure they'd be thrilled to do it, and they'll make a lot of money doing it. They don't need a financial incentive be able to do it. So that, that's the way I look at this. Um, I think if we exclude anything, it definitely should be Davis Island and Hyde Park. Um, I'm comfortable with, with the proposal in the university uh, North Hyde Park area. I'm comfortable. I, I, I'm ambivalent about it in West Tampa, and I'd like to hear from Mr. Miranda or Mr. Maniscalco um, in West Tampa, because this definitely has potential impact on Havana and Rome. And um, and then in regard to East Tampa, Councilman Goode's, I'll, you know, I'm, I'll follow your lead. So.
All right.
David, I'm sorry, I interrupted you. If you wanted to chime in on something, I said to you more than well.
Okay, uh, no, thank you very much, and I'm sorry I interrupted. The um, there's a few things. I ju- just want to uh, clarify that this amendment only affects the blue streets. The, you know, the arterial roadways, MLK, Hillsborough, even though they're not shown on this map, they already have this existing incentive.
True.
This just adds it to just the collector roadway. So the arterial citywide, if you have the CMU 35, you have this um, incentive for the vertical mixed-use a- already.
Um, You did a good job with the map. The map is very helpful.
Oh, good. I'm glad you liked it. We wanted to give you all the information that we could. Um, regarding the incentives to amend the plan to uh, uh, you know, a CMU 35, you know, that really, that, there's a financial incentive to always amend the plan. All, I would think all applicants, there, there's a financial decision being made to go and seek a higher, whether it's a CMU or a UMU or an R10 to an R20. There's always that incentive uh, for the, the additional density, which this doesn't actually give any additional density. Um, regarding uh, Hyde Park, a lot of that area is already Hyde Park Village, which we're already seeing, you know, vertical mixed-use. And then, you know, the area along Howard is where the um, the hotel and Burns has their uh, progress along that roadway as well. But um, yeah, I hope that answered all your questions.
Okay? If not, I will go to Councilman Citro, then Vera.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Hay, uh, there has been some properties that came before this council, and I'm, I'm not speaking for Councilman Dean Felder, but I know that he and I were both concerned about community mixed-use, where the ratio of residential to retail was only 1%. If we're going to change this, or we're thinking- If we're going to change this, or we're thinking about changing this to a commercial thirty-five, is there going to be a ratio of each development or each property that the ratio will be higher for retail, uh, in a residential building also? Is that going to be a mandatory? And I, I hope you followed what I tried to ask.
Yeah, I, I believe so. Councilman, there is no, um, under any of the mixed-use category. It's whether CMU, whether the SMU categories up in New Tampa, or any of the other urban mixed-use categories. There is no, in the comp plan currently, there is no requirement for the, um, inclusion of a certain percentage of mixed-use. You know, there's some concerns about that because, um, and I think the city will be exploring that in the future. But, you know, retail is changing rapidly, um, especially with COVID. We don't know what's, how it's going to be affected really after it. Also, you know, right now, it's, it's really left up how the comp plan is framed. It's left up to the decision of each, um, zoning and whether council thinks it's appropriate at that particular location to have, you know, a certain percentage or whether the amount in the, in the building is appropriate for the context of the neighborhood and, and things like that.
I, I agree with what you're saying. However, you know, you made point earlier that we want to be a walkable community in several of these areas. Uh, if, if we have a residential building that has little use for a, excuse me, little percentage for any type of retail, uh, what, what are we going to be walking from one building to the other for just a party at a friend's house? And I'm, and I'm, and I get, Mr. Hay, I'm not bringing this down on you, but it, it is food for thought if we're going to go this direction. Thank you, Mr. Hay.
And I, thank you. I do, I do believe the city is looking into that and, um, you know, will hopefully be getting back with you, uh, hopefully soon.
Thank you, Mr. Hay.
Councilman Veera.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can.
This is weird, okay. Uh, a- and I want to hear from the applicant, obviously. I mean, upon first impression with this, you know, thi- this is something that, that could potentially, again, I want, I want to hear. It's so funny because I, I, we haven't heard from the applicant yet. We're all sharing our feelings. Um, but, you know, this is something that I think is also calculated to the idea of development in underdeveloped areas or areas that, that need positive, um, uh, commercial and other kinds of development, including the West Tampa and East Tampa area. Again, I, I, I want to hear the applicant out, but that's my initial impression, um, particularly for these two areas. But again, I want to hear the applicant out, so it's probably premature for me to speak and, and say things because, uh, you know how it is. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, we go to the applicant. All right, let's go to the applicant.
Sorry, can, can you see me?
We can only hear you. We can't see you yet.
Oh, here we are.
There we go.
Thank you, um, Mr. Chairman, council members. Um, my name is David Mechanic, um, three oh-five South Boulevard. I had to think about it. I haven't been at that address in three months, but, uh, uh, I'm here on behalf of Andrew Cohen, and his, uh, primary interest in, uh, proposing this amendment is what you would call either West Tampa or North Hyde Park, which I think has experienced recently some, some very quality, uh, development that has occurred there. Um, I, I think Mr. Hay did a very thorough job of explaining the background on this request and the rationale. Um, I would just underscore two points, and that is that the amendment is simply to provide an economic incentive in locations where the city has already said that it desires mixed-use development. And those are the urban villages. You cannot take advantage of this provision unless you are in an urban village. So, I, I'd just like to underscore that point because that's already a decision that council made in terms of designating the, the urban villages. Um, I'd like to just respond to some of the council comments. Uh, Mr. Goode's, the, the, this only affects properties that are designated, uh, uh, community commercial or community mixed-use. So, this would not, uh, convert something that is residential automatically to a commercial mixed-use development. That would have to occur through a plan amendment. And I, and that really, uh, leads me to the response to Mr. Dingfelder's comment, which is the, no, no property can be added to that, that list of red dots on the map unless this city council approves a plan amendment for that piece of property. If they have a residential category, they have to come in and ask for either community commercial or community mixed-use. And if that was an inappropriate amendment, then this council would turn it down. Um, it has no obligation to approve a plan amendment uh, if it's inappropriate in the location that it's being sought. Um, and, uh, finally, the, uh, uh, what Mr. Citro was, uh, driving at is also addressed because a rezoning has to go in front of city council. And I've seen many applications that were denied on the basis that it was not an adequate mix of uses. So, if somebody puts in a token five hundred square feet of retail uh, in conjunction with a two-hundred-and-fifty-unit apartment project, I think you're going to see that as a sham and, and that would not be a true mixed-use development. So, you have the mechanism already in place to deal with whether or not a particular project in a particular location is appropriate. And I, I would just like to add, um, I, right before this hearing was originally scheduled, I learned that the Davis Island Civic Association, uh, had concerns. And I immediately took steps. I spoke to them and understood their concerns. So, I did file, as I think David mentioned, I did file modified language with the clerk. So, you have that now as part of the record of this, uh, proceeding that would eliminate Davis Island, um, from the effect of this amendment. So, uh, assuming this goes forward at the pleasure of council, uh, we are perfectly happy to, uh, delete Davis Island. And as I indicated, I submitted language reflecting that fact. Uh, I, I would go farther in that I, as I indicated, my client is, is primarily interested in West Tampa or North Hyde Park, as some of it is called. Uh, if there are significant concerns with either South Tampa or East Tampa, the language could be modified to eliminate those urban villages. I'm not advocating that because I, frankly, I think there's an advantage to, uh, especially in East Tampa, to allow for, uh, in, in incentives to, uh, uh, establish mixed-use development. But I would, personally, I would not object, my client would not object, if you did eliminate either the South Tampa or the East Tampa, uh, urban villages. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Do we have any questions for the gentleman?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Councilman Carlson.
Um, thank you, uh, Mr. Mechanic, for preempting my question, uh, which, similar to Mr. Dingfelder. Um, there's a lot of planning going on in South Tampa right now, and I, I wish that we could get through the planning of what the people in the community want before we do something like this, in particular in and around South Howard. I think that there has to be a lot of planning and, and, uh, difficult conversations about, um, the neighbors' concerns about some things that are going on there. And so, if, um, if it didn't include, uh, South Tampa, I, 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 that would take away my biggest opposition to it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, if I may, uh, thank you, Mr. Mechanic, for, for that and, and, and reflecting upon my question. Um, there are some steps the petitioners have to take that sometimes city council may not like. I was hoping that we could get and eliminate one of those steps in, in my comments. But I, I, I agree with you. Final, final decisions do come before city council. If there's any type of waivers or any type of, uh, uh, questions to, uh, development. Thank you, Mr. Mechanic. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hay, I saw your hand up, sir.
Thank you, uh, council member. The, um, just for, to clarify the record, I just want to make sure that you all understand that the urban villages are only within the Central Tampa Planning District. I, I know typically we all think, um, South Tampa is south of Kennedy, but in relations to the comp plan, um, it's a little further, South Tampa's a little further south right here, and Hyde Park is actually in the center, Central Tampa Planning District. I just wanted to make sure that was on the record.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Miranda?
Thank you. I, I just wanted, you know, I can't speak to you for West Tampa. I can speak to you what I know about West Tampa. But what, West Tampa is like anyplace else now. You, uh, just ten years ago, you could buy a, a billable lot for twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. The other day, I saw a lot for sale in West Tampa in the vicinity of, uh, Lincoln and St. Conrad for a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And, uh, guess what? If you go by there now, you'll see that there's construction on it. So, I don't know what they got for it, or what they sold for, but it was, uh, pretty high. It is changing, and at the same time it's changing, it is getting deteriorated in another mechanism where I would say that in every block in West Tampa, north of Columbus Drive, south of Hillsborough Avenue, in every block you can drive through, there's two or three homes that illegally have been changed to two and three and four apartments. And for years, it's been neglected. I think you have to have a comprehensive study of all of West Tampa, including the Treasury Department, because they're not paying no tax to nobody. They're not paying higher ad valorem tax. All right, so, Mary say, I'm going to get shot. Mary, I'm eighty. Makes no difference. So, what I'm trying to tell you is that these things have got to be changed. If you really want to talk about West Tampa and other parts of the city, this might be God-set compared to what they're doing now. Because this will be new. Uh, looking at the five-year review on homes built in the city of Tampa, whole area of the city for the last five years averaged about nine-hundred-and-fifty to nine-hundred-and-eighty homes a year being built. And, uh, we're running out of lots, so we're going to have to go verto, vertical. Or you're going to have to tear it out, one of the two. In West Tampa, there was a lot of lots ten years ago. Anytime you see a house now that's, uh, not too uppity-uppity, guess what happens? It is bought out and a new house comes on. So, they're going now, they have to pay a hundred and fifty, a hundred and thirty thousand for the lot, therefore, the price of the house goes sky-high. Vertically, you might get a better deal because you're building a lot more on a lot less. So, that's what I'm telling you, what I see in West Tampa. The lots that used to be car lots, not all of them in Seminole Heights, have somewhat how relocated to West Tampa through the years, not all at one time. And you see more and more about this. You can drive down, don't take my word, just take a drive. And that's all. I can only speak what I see in West Tampa, not what West Tampa needs right now.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Councilman Dingfelder.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh.
Um, Councilman Goode's, I, I think the, the big question, um, uh, falls back to you in regard to, um, you know, the, this, this, this matter came in front of us about a year ago uh, when staff brought it in front of us. And, and we, several of us expressed concern and we said, you know, we wanted more information. And then it kind of died in, in regard to a staff item. And then the, the private developer brought it back to us, and that's where it is right now through Mr. Mechanic. Um, but the, the question really hasn't changed. And, and Councilman Goode's, I, I'd look for you for guidance in regard to, you know, do you want to create incentives for, uh, vertical development in, in East Tampa on these, uh, on these collector roads? I think that's the, really the key issue. I mean, obviously, the six, the other six of us have the vote. But, you know, like, like Mr. Veera said earlier, I think, uh, earlier this morning, um, you know, we like to defer to the, uh, to the district councilman. Um, so that's in regard to East Tampa. In regard to, um, South Tampa, uh, Mr. Mechanic, um, I would like to, if, if we're going that route and we, and I see what your markup was to exclude Davis Island, I think we should also exclude, uh, any type of incentive for vertical development in, in Hyde Park as well. Um, I don't think we've had any discussions with Hyde Park on this, but I think if they were aware of it, uh, they wouldn't be too thrilled about it because, you know, I mean, even, uh, you know, there, there's an opportunity on, on Boulevard right there by Gori Elementary, uh, you know, I, I don't think anybody wants to see, you know, significant vertical stuff going up there or, or Swan Ave, likewise on Swan Avenue, uh, in Hyde Park. So, as Councilman, um, Carlson said, um, you know, he wouldn't be supportive of any of that on Davis Island or Hyde Park, and I'd feel the same way. But Councilman Goode's, it's, it's, ball's in your court, uh, in regard to East Tampa, from, from what I see.
Well, being on the, on the ACC board years ago in East Tampa, we've always said that these main roads of Nebraska, Florida Avenue, you know, Fortieth Street, need, need work, need developers to come in, need to go up for development. My main concern was these smaller roads, and that's why I asked it, because I know that area has a lot of residential there. When you sit thirty-fourth, you kind of pop my eyes on these things. I don't have an issue with giving, uh, some revisions for some developers to come in. But when you look at the overall picture, people are saying, what is the plan for East Tampa? And you have to hear what, what the actual goal is for East Tampa. I've heard of, you know, CDC, uh, other nonprofits. What is the city's plan, or what is the comprehensive master plan for East Tampa? So, that's what I'm looking to see, uh, from the, on the city aspect. Yes, we have a developer came and, and spent some money to try to get this on our agenda, but it, it still boils back to what is the plan for some of these areas, especially in the east? Uh, yeah, I don't have an issue about, you know, the incentives to, to help boost the, uh, the, what I call economic development in the east. Just worry about what the total plan will be for the east. That's my biggest concern because I look at some of the streets he just named, fifteenth and Hannah. When you drive by fifteen and Hannah, you know, you have homes on both those corners there, all down that street. So, I'm like, well, we're going to come in and just bulldoze out and have giant buildings there? I don't know. And I don't think that community right there, which is not a poor community of fifteenth and Hannah, to be honest with you. I look at some of the areas on the map, some of these areas, I, I, I keep telling people, everyone in East Tampa is not poor. It's just that East Tampa has been neglected, different administration not pouring, the tenure and care that Mr. Carlson always said, we have to put what we need, the resources in there to make sure it thrives like other places. So, I guess that's just my concern, wondering what, what is the plan, the overall plan? So, I, I'm not too supportive right now because I don't, I don't have information telling me what is the goal for East Tampa.
Uh, Mr. Chair? If I'm, I mean, if, if Councilman's done. Uh, yeah, I mean, i- if I'm hearing people write, why don't we move to exclude? Um, uh, I mean, because i- if, if, as, as Councilman Dingfelder said, I always pay special deference as we should to district members. And, and, uh, and, you know, we, we certainly should do that. If we move for, um, approval with exclusions of South and East Tampa, um, and I know that Councilman Dingfelder, I think, was talking about Davis, um, Island, if that's, uh, just to move this thing along. I mean, because I'm, I'm hearing hesitation on the part of Councilman Goode, and I wouldn't want him to, uh, go forward with that. Just a suggestion.
Well, I, I appreciate it, Mr. Veera. You know, uh, my only concern is, you know, I, I, I believe some of this could work. I just don't know how will it work? Because I don't have anything from the city telling me what is the overall plan for, for East Tampa. So, we make a, a bold decision to exclude or to accept. I, I'm, I'm, I'm in a rock and a hard show right now because I don't have enough information, uh, you know, hearing from constituents in the hearing. I, I, I'm, I'm in a rock and a hard show right now because I don't have enough information, uh, you know, hearing from constituents and hearing for overall CAC and some of the nonprofits in that area, because the question they've asked is, what is the plan? That's where I'm at right now.
So, Mr. Chairman, um,
Councilman Dingfelder?
And, and in light of that, instead of, instead of excluding areas, what we might want to do is just, uh, only include, if we look at the map, only include the areas, um, you know, it would be north of Kennedy, west of Boulevard, and, uh, north of Kennedy, west of Boulevard, south of Tampa Bay, and, uh,
East of Howard?
And, well, no, because, because it keeps going over there. Um, it looks like, what is that, Heims or? Or you could just say, you could say, uh, Dale Mavory.
Mr. Chairman, my speech.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, sir.
From what I'm hearing from different council members, I, uh, I don't want to dump everything on West Tampa. And if you leave, uh, if you take all the, I, I, I know you said you, that different council members have spoke about, the only area left is West Tampa, and if you can't just call it south of this, north of this, west of this, and north of that, because that is West Tampa what they're talking about. So either way, you talk about it one way or the other, it's still West Tampa. And I know the chairman, his, his main responsibility is the whole city like everyone else. Just because you live in a district, your vote means just as much to the city as it does to your district. You got fourteen points up percent of one of seven votes equals to a hundred. So I'm just looking at this and I, I don't feel comfortable with the conversation that I've heard. Uh, eliminate this, eliminate that, eliminate this, eliminate that, and what's left is one, one neighborhood, West Tampa. And I would object to that then. It's gotta be distributed in the city in a fair and equitable manner. And, uh, therefore I think that would be right, uh, when, when you, this, this city is growing so fast and so furious that it's very hard to control at times. When you have a thousand people moving into Florida every day, maybe even more now, and you have all the strains and all the responsibility that we have, and then you look at West Tampa. West Tampa used to be forgotten for many times until, you know, what happened, people realize is five minutes from anything, from the airport, from the expressway, from downtown, from any hospital, from any venue you want to go to, from Arch to whatever. And now that's why the property has escalated so high in cost. So I, I'm not against this or any other one like this, but it should be disparate throughout the city.
Mr. Chairman? Councilman Goode?
I guess as to David and Mr. Mechanic, is, are we at a certain timeframe here? I mean, because, uh, if we're not, I, I'd like to have some discussions, maybe looking at, uh, some of the, some of the, uh, CACs, CRA's that are involved in this process, to make sure we're on the right track and look and see what their, 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 their needs are, what the, what the overall need is for everybody. So I don't know if there's a timeframe to, to move this, or we can hold off till we can have some more conversation with those, uh, those different, uh, groups in the, in the, in each district.
I think we could continue this item.
Mr. Mechanic?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, Mr. Chairman, council members, ab- absolutely. Oh, David Mechanic again for the record. I mean, I'd, I'd rather it be continued, um, and studied further than, than denied, certainly. So, um, I would definitely request that.
Mr. Chair, could we hear a public comment on this yet?
Not yet, not yet. Uh, let's go before any motions are made, see if there's anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this item. Item number nine. Do we have anybody registered that has, uh, sent any documents, anything?
No one has registered to speak on this item, nor we have received any written comments on this item.
And the convention center?
I lean to study of planning and development, and there is no one here to speak on this item. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Carlson, as you have heard and seen, there isn't a public comment. Uh, do you wish to speak at this time or allow the petitioner to make a motion?
No, I, that answered my question. Thank you.
All right, um, Mr. Shelby, before we close the public hearing, would we request a motion or after we close the public hearing?
If it's a motion to continue, you do not close the public hearing.
Okay, Councilmember Mars.
May I ask the petitioner how much time he needs?
Uh, I, I, actually, I would defer to council. I don't, it's not that I need additional time. It's a question of whether Mr. Goode's, the PUP community outreach that he's recommending, how long that would take, uh.
And, uh, Mr. Oh.
I'm not opposed to this at all. A, a growing city needs some hype somewhere. Uh, I'd just like to see, uh, the petitioner get his day and, and before the council's, I, I wish for a continuance for sixty days. Then he not miss a petition.
That would be fine with me, sir.
That would put us at, if it's, if it's gonna be for an evening session, would put us at December tenth at six P M.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Carlson.
Um, Mr. Mechanic, um, sixty days would give you a chance to talk to all of us and, and maybe talk to staff, but just a suggestion. The city has just added planners for the first time in many years. Um, Randy Goers is one of them and, and of course Carol Pose. Maybe you've spoken to them about this in depth, but they're going through and, um, to my colleagues, you, you remember we talked about the neighborhood commercial district idea, uh, that we asked the planning commission to do. Now the city has taken that in-house and instead of doing one a year, they're doing two as beta test. One is the Palm, what's now called the Palmasia Neighborhood Commercial District. Another one is Main Street in We- in West Tampa. But it would be, it would, Mr. Mechanic, it would be interesting to find out and maybe we could ask, um, planning staff to come before us and just talk to us about their timeline for engaging the community about planning, uh, and the, the depth of planning that they're gonna do. I know they'll get to East Tampa soon and, and then we have maybe a hundred and thirty just of these neighborhood commercial districts that we need to look at. Plus, October twenty-second, we have a discussion on what areas of the city want growth and which ones don't. And so that's a great forum to listen to the community as well. But I think, um, uh, my feeling besides just cutting certain areas out of this, is that we need to have a robust conversation with the public to figure out what they want so that it's not just a, an ad hoc, uh, kind of, um, plan change. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Councilman Vieira?
Thank you very much. I mean, I, I think that regardless of the time, if the applicant's fine with the time, that's fine, but the main issue that's really before us is Councilman Miranda brought up the issue of whether or not all this will be uh, placed into West Tampa with unintended consequences. I think we all want commercial development in areas that are underdeveloped and in need of, uh, more, uh, you know, robust infusions of free enterprise growth, et cetera. Um, but the real issue is what effect is this gonna have to have that actively distributed in East Tampa? So I think that's a conversation that, uh, needs to be had with Councilman Goode's, uh, in particular, as well as, I mean, all council members, including those citywide especially, but especially Councilman Goode's, um, to have that conversation to see what accommodation of, of these changes can be had in East Tampa to address, uh, um, the questions that Councilman Goode's has, but then the concerns of unintended consequences that Councilman Miranda has. You get, you get one, you get both, in other words. That's my message. So, um, we may be able to do it before sixty days, but, but I'll leave that to the applicant. Just my thoughts. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Jim? Councilman Goode?
You know, it's like, it's like a, a double-edged sword. So I want to make sure that, that we can bend that sword and, and, and melt it down to have one sword for the east. And that's why I keep saying, you know, this could be a great, a great thing, but I don't know how great it could be and, and how this plan is gonna work out. So I, I'm just asking that we, we, we continue it. We have conversation with those stakeholders, you know, CAC of East Tampa, some of the other neighborhood associations to get their input. I don't want to be the long ranger to make a decision from my constituents, when I haven't really talked to them about this type of plan. And I think it's fair to them because we want development, we want economic empowerment, but I want to know what that's gonna look like. And again, I've had some of these nonprofits saying, where's East Tampa's plan? Everyone else has a plan. Where is our plan in the east? And I think that's what we have to be driving for, uh, in the future right now. What is the plan? We are, everyone talks about these. Uh, we talk about gentrification, we talk about everything else, but where is the plan? I think that is key moving forward. Give us the plan. That has to be a conversation with all the stakeholders.
Ms. Wells and then Councilman Dingfelder?
Just a quick question with regard to the neighborhood outreach. Um, I'm unclear as to who's taking the initiative on that.
May I make a suggestion, may, may I make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman, members of council?
Yeah.
My suggestion is you leave enough time to at least get a handle on what's happening on October twenty-second, and maybe that's a question to bring up for staff on October twenty-second and give direction as a result of the workshop, keeping in mind what's, what, what your discussion is here tonight. That's something to consider. And then Natalie, still leave enough time after the twenty-second of October to, uh, give the opportunity for staff to make a decision how they're going to move forward before this comes back to council so it can be resolved.
All right. Anybody else? Councilman Carlson?
Just, just one other quick thing. Um, Mr. Mechanic, I think the area that you're most concerned in is this area that's um, between downtown and Rome and north and south bordered by two seventy-five and, and Kennedy. That area, anybody who drives through there obviously sees that there's heavy density going on there, and I don't know exactly what planning there is. Uh, but that area is past the tipping point and, um, there, maybe there's a way to, um, have a robust conversation with that community and, and get some larger designation there. When we talk about West Tampa, it's a huge area, but that particular piece, is, is already past the tipping point. As you go further west, some of the neighborhoods get more and more concerned, but, um, but maybe there's a section there that, that in particular you might want to, you're in on to make sure that the city is doing some planning and visioning and public outreach. Just a thought.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Dingfelder?
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. I agree with you. Um, I wanted to reiterate, uh, what Councilman Citro said earlier, because I think he's right on. And, and Councilman Goode's specifically as related to East Tampa. People will point to these red dots and they'll say, oh, this is a, a mixed-use category. Um, you know, they, they can, you know, if, if they put up an apartment building, they gotta put it, you know, shops and stuff in the bottom, you know, that sort of thing. But that's not the way that neither the comp plan nor the code reads. Um, so just be aware of that. Um, as Mr. Citro said, and, and as Mr. Hay confirmed, you know, the mixed-use category, they can come in with ninety-nine percent of apartment building and, and, you know, and have a, a ten-foot closet that they call commercial. And, and that, unfortunately, that satisfies the, uh, the description of mixed use right now because we haven't, we haven't tightened that up yet. Um, I've talked to David, David Hay about tightening up and I've talked to his, his boss about tightening it up. So that's, that's really a question of policy for this council. But I, I just wanted to give you that heads up, uh, Orlando.
I mean, you're right. I mean, if you, if you're talking about these type of projects, you know, you're throwing a bunch of apartments somewhere and cluttering people in, that, that doesn't do anything for the economic impact on that community. When you have some good retail and you're talking about walkable neighborhoods, you know, you can bring a barber shop, maybe a nice cigar shop or something. That's development of a community that was risen in that building and the surrounding people can come, walk up to, go inside, do certain things. So that's the type of thing I'm talking about. I go to other communities, that's what I see. See, I have big buildings with people in them, nice shops on the bottom, people can walk and enjoy it and relax. So that's why I'm, I'm, my, my biggest concern, making sure, what is the plan? Not just the build some buildings, but that's for a density purpose, but what is it gonna bring?
Very good. Councilman Miranda and Mr. Hay.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Chairman. And, and West Tampa does have, like I said, the four, there's very few pieces of land, but there's a lot of property that's underutilized with the structures on them, and there's some properties that are vacant, uh, on Howard Avenue and on Armenia Avenue between, let's say, uh, Columbus Drive and Kennedy.
Mr. Chairman, is there a motion on the floor?
There is land available in Howard and Armenia. Uh, and, and if you just drive up those streets wherever it was interested in, can look at them, and I don't know if they're for sale or not. But everything has a price, I guess. So, uh, there's some properties that are underutilized by the buildings that are on them for a long, long time that have been there. And it, it, it would be redevelopment, it would bring up the area, no doubt about that. But I'm not totally opposed to this. I just don't want all of it in one section, wherever the section is in the city. Whether it's East Tampa, West Tampa, South Tampa, North Tampa, it should be distributed evenly throughout the city.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hay. And then, uh, motion to, to move this along.
Thank you, council members. David Hay, again, your planning commission staff. I just want to make sure we're clear for the record. The land use category of CMU thirty-five and CC thirty-five, all these parcels that you're seeing in red can go up to a two right now. There's no requirement for any mixed use at all. They could be all single-use structures under how the plan is written currently. This, uh, would incentivize that, uh, mixed use, but, um, you know, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, it, there is no requirement for even one percent. There's single use. Anyone, the whole mixed-use category could be proposed just for single-use structures. We saw that over in West Tampa when a lot of those first developments came in. Um, your staff, when meeting with applicants, would always say you're in a mixed use and it's encouraged, but there were no tools to encourage it. They would say thank you and then they would move on to propose their single-use apartment building. Now you're starting to see the market respond and actually some of these have, uh, so, um, this, you know, your, your planning staff thought that this app, application was appropriate based on, um, limiting it to the quarters. You're not, you know, the expansion into neighborhoods is not gonna happen because they have to have frontage on that roadway. Even if they, you know, if, if it's next door to it or anything, if, if it doesn't meet those strict requirements, it can't even be, it could still be considered for mixed use, but it wouldn't get any, um, but it would still need to go through that development agreement process.
Thank you very much. We have a motion to continue this or what, what are we gonna do?
I'll second a motion to continue until we get, uh, we can get with, uh, staff uh, in reference, in reference to this item and also in reference to a, a, a master plan, a covers a plan. I, I, I know some other districts already have it, but East Tampa doesn't. So I know the twenty-second of October is supposed to bring information, reference to, uh, planning and zoning, and maybe this needs to be included in that, and those questions can be answered during that time.
Great. Uh, Mr. Mechanic? Yes, or Councilman, or Mr. Shelby?
Yes, this being, uh, set the way it is and the, um, posture the way it is, would December seventeenth or Janu- excuse me, December, the evening of December tenth or the evening of January twenty-first be acceptable?
You want those filed with me?
Did you want to ask, you want to ask Mr. Mechanic what his, um, preference is?
Yeah, um, I, I mean, my preference would be December tenth simply because it's suitor, but I, I fully understand if you don't have all the answers that, that may, that may, it may have to be continued again. But I'd rather schedule it for the earlier date and then have to push it back.
Okay, so, uh, can I get a motion to reschedule this for December tenth, six P M?
On the floor prior, Mr. Chairman, I'll make it again, December tenth.
Six P M, a motion at six P M. Thank you. Six P M, a motion to continue?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
That's a motion from Councilmember Miranda for December tenth to six P M. Do we have a second?
Do I do that?
Second from Councilman Citro. Okay, any discussion? Hearing non-roll call vote?
Vieira?
Yes.
Goode?
Yes.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
Maniscaco?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. Uh, next is item number ten.
Chair? Wait, Mr. Shelby, Shelby, do we need to make a motion? I mean, make a motion at the end of the meeting? Members to cover as a master plan to bring back on the twenty-second when we discuss, uh, the issue?
You can certainly make a mo- yes, the, uh, new business, you certainly can make a motion to bring back the issue, whether to come back with a master plan by the twenty-second. No, but to add that to the agenda for discussion, certainly that would be in order, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll go to item number ten. Item number ten, please.
Jennifer Malone with her planning commission staff. Can I share my screen, please?
Okay, we can see it. Go ahead.
Great. This is another text amendment for, uh, twenty oh four. It is amending, um, LU Objective eleven point two and associated policies. This is publicly initiated by the planning commission staff with the cooperation of the city of Tampa staff and the legal department. It is proposing to delete objective. It is proposing to delete Objective LU Objective eleven point two and rework some of the policies. The objective itself is highlighting specific policing activity that should be undertaken by the Tampa Police Department for code enforcement. We just found that having these specific terms in the comprehensive plan such as Crack House and was not beneficial to the plan, and we would instead direct the police department to focus on all types of drug activity instead of just one. And the language has been in the plan since about nineteen ninety-eight, so it's probably due for a little bit of re-write. It is consistent with our policies on promoting safer residential neighborhoods and the cooperation, the coordination between the Tampa Police Department and neighborhood associations, and it was found consistent.
Do we have any questions from council members for item number ten? Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number ten or any documents received?
No one has registered to speak on this item, nor we have any written comments on this item.
Do we have anybody at the convention center?
I link the study of planning and development, and there's no one to speak on this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, can we get a motion to close the public hearing?
Someone?
We have a motion from Councilmember Miranda, the second from Councilman Carlson. Hearing none, without objection and by unanimous consent. The hearing is closed. Who would like to make a motion to transmit this public hearing?
Oh, move.
We have a motion from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilman Viera. Roll call vote.
Viera.
Yes.
Goods.
Yes.
Ding Felder.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
And Maniscaco.
Yes.
Motion carry unanimously.
All right, we now go to the public hearings that are quasi-judicial. Can I have a motion to open items eleven through twenty-three? We have a motion to open Councilmember Miranda, from second from Councilmember Citro. Any objection? By unanimous consent. The, and no objection, the hearings are now open. We'll begin with item number eleven. Councilman Citro, if you wouldn't mind taking over for just a moment.
Jennifer Malone with the planning commission, item number eleven is second reading and adoption for Tampa Plan Amendment twenty eighteen. This was heard by Tampa City Council on the evening of September tenth, twenty twenty, and I'm here for any questions.
Sorry, Mr. Shelby, do we need to swear, swear the petition in?
If he plans on making any statements, that would be a good idea. Thank you.
Anybody wishing to speak with this, with this ordinance, please, would you raise your hand and be sworn in?
Is there anybody scheduled to register to speak on this besides Mr. Bentley?
No, we don't have anyone who registered to speak on this item.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Do you swear affirm, you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and the clerk's office did not receive any written comments on this item.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Malone, excuse me, Ms. Malone, are you finished with your report?
I am finished with my report, with my report, sir.
Thank you, go ahead, Mr. Bentley.
Again, Mr. Chairman, council members, my name is Mark Bentley, four oh one East Jackson Street, Tampa three three six oh two. And I represent the applicant. This is second reading, this is a small parcel on the north side of Cypress Street. It relates to the Midtown project that's under construction at this point in time. It's about ten thousand square feet. And the subject property will be incorporated into the project once, by amending the PD, which will come before council. So if you have any questions, I'm here to try and answer them. Thank you.
Any council members have any questions? Anyone at the Tampa Convention Center that has any questions? I mean, any comments?
I link the study of planning and development, and there's no one here to speak on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to close the proceedings? Close hearing. Who's that second? Motion made by Councilman Good, seconded by Councilman Carlson. Roll call, please. Roll call for the vote, please.
Viera.
Yes.
Goods.
Yes.
Ding Felder.
Are we voting on closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
And Maniscaco.
Yes.
Motion carry unanimously.
Mr. Chair, I hand you back to Gallow.
Right, number eleven, correct, and we just closed the public hearing?
That's correct.
All right, Councilman Ding Felder, would you mind reading the item number eleven?
Sure, I'd be glad to. Mr. Chairman, all hell broke loose while you were gone too. It's like, it went crazy.
I knew it.
All right, just kidding you, Jeff.
One, one second to find hell, okay?
It's coming, it's coming soon. It's up on the agenda.
It's a philosophical issue we'll have to get into later. All right, item eleven, P A twenty dash eighteen. Read the following ordinance for second reading and adoption. An ordinance amending the Imagine twenty forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element Future Land Use Map Property Located Generally at three six one five West Cypress Street. From Community Commercial thirty-five, C C thirty-five, to Regional Mixed Use one hundred, R M U one hundred, providing for appeal of ordinances in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Goods, roll call vote.
Viera.
Yes.
Goods.
Yes.
Ding Felder.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
And Maniscaco.
Yes.
Motion carry unanimously.
Thank you very much. Next up is item number twelve.
Jennifer Malone with her planning commission staff, item number twelve is Tampa Plan Amendment twenty twenty. This is a companion amendment to twenty eighteen. It is publicly initiated, so there will be no applicant. It is second reading from Community Commercial thirty-five to Regional Mixed Use one hundred, and again, it's West Cypress, on September tenth, and that's the list map presentation.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak on item number twelve?
No one has registered to speak on this item, and we did not receive any written comments on this item.
Anybody at the convention center?
I link the study of planning and development, and there's no one here to speak on this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments from council before I ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
Close.
We have a motion from Councilmember Miranda, second from Councilman Goods. Any objection? Hearing no objection, therefore by unanimous consent. The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Goods, would you mind reading this item, item number twelve?
Yes, Mr. Chair, file number P A twenty dash twenty, was being, what ordinance is being presented for second reading and adoption? An ordinance amending the Imagine twenty forty Tampa Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Element Future Land Use Map for the property located west of the intersection of West Cypress Street and North of Hines Avenue. From Community Commercial thirty-five, C C thirty-five, to Regional Mixed Use one hundred, M U one hundred, providing for repeal of all orders in conflict, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Citro, roll call vote.
Viera. Viera. Goods.
Yes.
Ding Felder.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
And Maniscaco.
Yes.
Motion care, would Viera be an abstinent vote?
Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so the only one who is missing is Councilman Viera presently?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Next up is item number thirteen.
Jimmy Cook, Planning and Development Staff, staff has no objections to the ordinance being read, second reading.
All right. Do we have any questions or comments at this time? No, all right, we have the applicant here, anything?
I look up at six zero one eight North Ola Avenue, we are the applicant, and we just expect to be requested approval and we're available for an interview.
All right, any questions for the applicant, anybody? Do we have anybody from the public that wishes to speak on this item, item number thirteen?
No one has registered to speak on this item, and we don't have any written comments on this item.
Ms. Samaniego, I see you on the screen. Anything? No, all right, anything?
I did, I did have a question. Where am I?
Where is, where is Ding Felder?
I know, where's Wal-, where's Walda? So, Ms. Kurt, I drove by the property just to double check and, and, and see and everything. In addition to the notice on, in the side yard, I saw a large banner, I believe. And, but there was no relationship between the two, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's the inside thing.
You can drive by.
Oh, all righty, so no public comment, anything else? Can we have a motion then to?
To the Tampa Convention Center, to the Tampa Convention Center speak, I believe.
Yeah, she said there was nobody there.
Nobody, is that, okay.
Is that correct? Nobody at the convention center?
No one at the convention center, correct.
Thank you very much. We have a motion closed from Councilmember Miranda, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Carlson, is there any objection? Hearing none, and by unanimous consent, the public hearing is now closed. Councilmember Viera is not on. Councilmember Miranda, would you mind reading item number thirteen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move item number thirteen, file number V H C twenty dash twelve, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance vacating, closing, discontinuing, and abandoning all portions of Airline Street to those two other portions of alley in C, the, Tuni subdivision lying south of Hannah Avenue, north of Paris Avenue, east of Lynn Street, west of Ola Avenue, same being more further described in section one thereof, subject to certain covenants, conditions, and restrictions as more particularly set forth herein, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second? Councilmember Viera, I believe. All right, roll call vote, please.
Viera.
Yes.
Goods.
Yes.
Ding Felder.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
And Maniscaco.
Yes.
Motion carry unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Rebecca. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, item number fourteen.
Mary Samaniego, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination, item number fourteen is REZ twenty fifty-seven. It's a second reading to Euclidian zoning district. This application is ready to proceed, please.
All right. Go ahead. We have the applicant on. Have you been sworn in? If not, raise your hand.
Do you swear affirm, you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and the clerk's office did not receive any written comments on this item.
Very good. All right, go ahead.
Good evening, City Council, Jessica Iserman Sterns Weaver Miller, four oh one East Jackson Street, Suite twenty-one hundred. This case is Euclidian rezoning request located on the west side of the river, north of Columbus Drive and south of Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. The application came before you on first reading on September tenth, twenty twenty. You may recall, this property is currently zoned PD for two duplexes with four dwelling units, and is requesting to go back to two single-family lots under the RS fifty zoning. Although our client intends to build his home on the property as one lot at this time. Per code, it would qualify for two single-family lots, however. At first hearing, who, I'm sorry. At first hearing, we received unanimous vote and would respectfully request your approval on second reading this evening. I'm available for questions. And apologies, at seven o'clock, our office lights turn off, so that's why I'm in the dark now. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for the applicant?
Just tell, tell Ron Weaver he's gotta pay that electric bill.
Yeah, yeah.
Will do.
You sure it's not motion sensor? You wave your hands?
No, it's, someone was supposed to call in to make sure the light stayed on past seven, and that phone call was not made. But it's okay.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant? If not, any public comment for this item, number fourteen?
No one has registered to speak on this item.
Do we have anybody at the convention center?
There is no one at the convention center to speak on this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, if there is nothing else, may I have a motion to close?
Oh, move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to close from Councilmember Miranda, with a second from Councilmember Goods. Any objection? Without any objection and by unanimous consent, this hearing is now closed. Councilman Citro, would you mind reading item number fourteen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, file number REZ twenty dash fifty-seven, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. Ordinance rezoning property in the vicinity of four zero three three North River View Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, over particularly described in section one from zoning district classification PD land development residential, single-family detached to RS fifty residential, single-family, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilmember Miranda, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Viera.
Yes.
Goods.
Yes.
Ding Felder.
Yes.
Miranda.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
And Maniscaco.
Yes.
Motion carry unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, thank you. All right, item number fifteen.
Mary Samaniego, item number fifteen is REZ twenty sixty-two. It's a second reading for Euclidian zoning district. I ask that you proceed with the application.
Do you swear affirm, you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And the clerk's office did not receive any written comments on this item.
All right, thank you very much. Go ahead. Mr. Michelini, you're muted. Has everybody been sworn in? Yes, all right, Mr. Michelini, you have, unmute yourself. We can't, we, Mr. Michelini, we can't hear you.
Okay, there we go.
Yes, sir, now we can hear you.
We respectfully request your approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. We received approval on the first reading, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, any questions for the applicant? Hearing none, all right. Do we have any public comment on this item, item number fifteen?
No one has registered to speak on this item.
Anybody at the convention center?
There is no one here to speak on this item.
Very good. If there is nobody else, may I have then a motion to close the public hearing?
Oh, move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion closed from Councilmember Miranda, with a second from Councilman Goods. Is there any objection? Hearing none by unanimous consent, this hearing is now closed. Councilmember Carlson, would you mind taking item number fifteen?
Yes, sir, thank you. File number REZ twenty dash sixty-two, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. Ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of thirty-five oh two and thirty-five oh six West Taccon Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification RS fifty residential, single-family to RS fifty residential, single-family, providing effective date.
Do we have a second? Second, Councilmember Viera. Roll call vote, please.
Viera.
Yes.
Goods.
Yes.
Ding Felder.
Yes.
Miranda. Carlson.
Yes.
Citro.
Yes.
And Maniscaco.
Yes.
Motion carry unanimously.
Thank you very much. Item number sixteen. Thank you, sir, count, item number sixteen.
Mary Samaniego, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination, item number sixteen is REZ twenty sixty-four.
I'm sorry, Mary, I need to interrupt. I need to recuse myself on this item sixteen, seven ten West Kentucky Avenue. As I stated earlier in the meeting, I shouldn't, I should have recused myself at, at first hearing, but I didn't realize where the, exactly what block of Kentucky this was in. I thought it was further west. But now that I looked at the maps and everything, I realized that it's very close to a client of mine. And I believe they were. Uh, and I believe they would, uh, they would have, uh, potential benefit from, from this rezoning, and, uh, I believe that in the interests of appearances. Uh, it'd be better if I recuse myself, is that adequate, Mr. Shelby?
Mr. Shelby is muted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yes, um, I will prepare that form for you, and I will be delivering it to have you be able to submit it, um, uh, timely within fifteen days, by next week is hopefully the case.
Thank you, I'll tune out.
Thank you very much, all right. Let's begin then, item number sixteen, Ms. San Diego, you were saying?
Thank you, Mary San Diego again, this is item number REZ twenty sixty-four, it's ready to be heard.
All right, thank you very much. Please raise your hand, applicant, we're going to swear you in.
Do you swear affirm you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, and the clerk's office did not receive any written comments on this item.
Thank you very much, all right, I have the petitioner on the line, go ahead, sir.
I'm Tracy Hamilton, my wife Michelle Hamilton residing at seven ten West Kentucky. We're just requesting a rezoning from RS sixty to RS fifty to allow for a, uh, an investment property to be built, a single family structure.
All right, do we have any questions for the petitioner? Hearing none, do we have any public comment, anybody registered or at the Convention Center?
Chair, we did receive one registration to support the application from Kelly Wiley, but she is not registered, well, she's not on logged in right now.
There is no one at Tampa Convention Center.
All right, any other questions or comments? Can we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Oh, hold on, Mr. Chairman.
Your motion closed, Councilman Miranda, with a second from Councilmember Goots, any objection? Hearing none by unanimous consent, without any objection, the public hearing is closed. Councilmember Goots, would you mind reading item number sixteen?
Yes, Mr. Chair, file number REZ twenty dash sixty-four, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of seven ten West Kentucky Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida. More particularly described in section one from zoning, uh, district classification RS sixty, residential, single family, to RS fifty residential, single family, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Citro, roll call vote?
Vera?
Yes.
Goots?
Yes.
Ding Felder? Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
And Maniscaco?
Yes.
Motion carry with Ding Felder abstaining?
Alrighty, uh, next we go to item number seventeen, I believe, Councilmember Goots, you will be standing from this?
Yes, I will stand, Mr. Sir.
And Mr. Goots, the reason is for, as you stated previously, it's a family relationship you have that, uh, concerns your fate. Okay, thank you very much, I'll prepare that form so you can submit it, uh, I'll provide to you, um, hopefully before next week, obviously.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, all right, item number seventeen, if you would please raise your hand, and we'll swear you in.
Do you swear affirm you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, and the clerk's office did not receive any written comments on this item.
Thank you, this is item number seventeen, this is REZ twenty thirty-three, it's a rezoning to a planned development. All required changes between first and second reading have been made to the site plan, and that site plan has been submitted to the city clerk, you may proceed with the hearing, sir.
All right, go ahead, applicant? You're muted, you're muted, sir, unmute yourself. You're still muted.
My goodness. I am. Ooh.
We can hear you, we can hear you.
Okay, very good, well, JD also box six, I'm already doing eighty-three seventy West Hills Road Avenue, Suite two oh five Tampa, thirty-three, six one five. I already sworn, and, um, ask respectfully for your approval, and ask any question.
Do you have any questions for the applicant? All right, do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak, anybody registered, or any documents that have been received?
No, no written comments, we will see you on this item, and we cannot receive any registered, um, person to speak on this item.
Thank you very much, anybody at the Convention Center?
I'm English, I have planning and development, and there is no one here can decide him, thank you.
Thank you very much, any other questions or comments from council before we get a motion to close this public hearing? Don't move. Your motion closed from Councilman Vera, second from Councilman Miranda, is there any objection to closing the public hearing? Hearing none by unanimous consent, and without any objection, the public hearing is closed. Councilmember Vera, would you mind reading item number seventeen?
I, I sure will, Mr. Chair, thank you, sir, I move an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of five one four four East Bush Boulevard in the city of Tampa, Florida. And more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification CD Commercial General to PD Plan Development Restaurant with drive-in, providing an effective date.
Do we have a second? Second from Councilman Miranda, do we have a roll call vote, please?
Vera?
Yes.
Goots? Ding Felder?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
And Maniscaco?
Yes.
Motion carry with Goots abstaining?
All right, we now go into, uh, rezonings, um, I, I had heard something earlier, do folks wish to take a break before we go into some of the later hearings?
It's probably a good idea.
Okay, because we still have quite a few items, and I know one will be lengthy, at least very lengthy. Um, do we take number eighteen, and after that, we take a, uh, break of about twenty minutes or so?
That's fine.
Anybody need any longer, eat something, whatever it is, anything? Or is twenty minutes sufficient?
An hour?
Or fifteen.
I think ten minutes is sufficient.
Yeah, ten or fifteen.
All right, we'll, we'll do fifteen, all right, we'll start with item number eighteen.
Mr. Chairman, I believe, I don't, you can confirm with the clerk, but I don't know whether you're, um, um, these hearings were open eighteen through.
I opened everything all the way to twenty-three. Yeah, all right, go ahead. Please raise your hands to be sworn in for item number eighteen.
Do you swear affirm you would tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, and the clerk's office did not receive any written comments on this item.
All right, go ahead.
Good evening, Council, Ryan Manassi, planning, design, and development coordination, item number eighteen is file number REZ twenty dash thirty-five for the property located at five 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 Northwest Shore Boulevard. Their, their request before you is from a PD for a hotel motel, and they're requesting PD plan development for a hotel motel. I will defer to the planning commission for their report and request that you return to me so I could finish mine.
All right, go ahead.
Senator from along with the planning commission, I'm going to share my screen. Twenty thirty-five is, I apologize, uh, let me just get my screens. Okay, twenty thirty-five is, uh, at, located at five 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 Northwest Shore Boulevard, as you can see, it's just south of the, um, West Shore I two seventy-five North Ramp. A portion of the subject site is located in with the, um, coastal high hazard area, it's in Level B evacuation zone. It is adjacent to the Hart West Shore Plaza Transfer Center, which provides numerous connections from the subject site, um, with public transit, this is the West Shore Mall right here. The adopted future land use of the subject site is regional mixed use one hundred, which is, uh, within this area, this area is also identified as a business center. Uh, it does, uh, the land use does, um, transition to a lower density as we move east, this is residential thirty-five in the darker brown, and then residential twenty in the lighter brown. Um, we did find this consistent with the comprehensive plan, the applicant is requesting to, uh, amend the PD to increase square footage. It is so well within the, um, density and intensity increases within the RM one hundred feature land designation. But we did find it consistent with the plan and comparable and compatible with the surrounding area, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, before we continue, I, I'm positive that the motion that I made to open the public hearings went all the way through to item number twenty-three, but let's, to be safe. Uh, can I get a motion to open items number eighteen to twenty-three?
Eighteen to twenty-three, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, Councilman Miranda, second from Councilman Citro, is there any objection? Hearing none by unanimous consent, items eighteen to twenty-three are open, just to be safe for the record.
Ryan Manassi with planning and development, if you would please share my screen? Please let me know if you see the title block, REZ.
Twenty thirty-five.
Thank you, sir, uh, filed, again, item number eighteen is file number REZ twenty dash thirty-five, and this is the applicant proposing to rezone the property located at five 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 Northwest Shore Boulevard. From the existing plan development to PD plan development to allow for the partial renovation of the hotel to include a future meeting room expansion on the second floor. The property is currently approved for, uh, through the PD file number Z eighty-two dash fifty-five, and that was for the hotel or motel use. Uh, this nineteen eighty-two approval was for three hundred and sixty-five thousand square foot building area with three hundred and three rooms. The existing hotel is three hundred and fifty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-five square feet with two hundred and forty-three rooms. The proposed site plan increases the existing number of rooms from two hundred and forty-three to two hundred and seventy-three, and a building area to three hundred and fifty-four thousand six hundred and sixty-five square feet. The two point two seven two acre property is located on the northeast corner of Northwest Shore Boulevard and West Gray Street intersections. Um, it is surrounded by right of way to the north, which is I two seventy-five, and the CG and OP one zoning districts. Commercial and residential multifamily uses to the south, and the CG and residential multifamily RM twenty-four zoning districts. Residential multifamily use to the east in RM twenty-four zoning district, and the West Shore Mall to the west, which is zoned PD, um, as well as the commercial uses, uh, and right of way in the CG zoning district. The PD setbacks per the, uh, the site plan are, uh, shown as the north being, um, I'm sorry, two feet, the south being fifteen feet, the west being zero, and east forty. The parking structure to the north, um, setbacks are north, zero feet, south, uh, not applicable, west, zero feet, and east forty feet. The maximum building height is proposed at a hundred and seventy-six feet, and the parking structure at seventy feet. The required parking is two hundred and eighty-eight parking spaces with three loading berths, and a total provided parking, uh, is two hundred and twenty-eight spaces, which is a twenty-one percent reduction with one loading berth. Um, on the PowerPoint in front of you, the slide will show the seven waivers that are being requested, I would like to point out, as you can read through them in the staff report, as well as on screen, you see most of these waivers, if not all of them, are, are there because of existing conditions of the existing hotel. The area or this, uh, zoning map shows you the subject property, uh, hatched in green, and as you can see, the CG zoning districts and the right of way, the OP one to the north. RM twenty-four to the east with the CG to the south, as well as RM twenty-four, and then that large PD to the west, uh, which is West Shore Mall. The aerial map, uh, similar to what Jennifer showed, uh, is just showing the vicinity and the thousand foot buffer of any historical landmarks within the area. There is the Tampania House, which is located within that thousand foot buffer. The next screen shows the site plan and the existing hotel, and it's more of that, um, backwards L-shaped lot with two access points here on Gray Street, and those are existing. And then this grayed out area, which the applicant can, uh, explain further, but this would be the new proposed area. Um, again, this wasn't a previously approved PD, so any kind of expansion or changes to it, they had to come back through for rezoning. The, the slide in front of you now show the elevations, um, the left being the proposed, and the, the right pictures being the existing. And then these are just some photos of the subject site that I took. Um, this would be looking north on both of these. And then the south neighbor, which is the Shore Colony Condos across the street, and then the other south neighbor directly south would be a bank, and it's at four oh five Northwest Shore Boulevard. Um, the east neighbor is the West Shore Apartments at forty-six oh one West Gray Street, and the west neighbor is being five hundred Northwest Shore Boulevard, and that's across the street. The north, uh, the picture on the left is north on West Shore Boulevard, and then the picture on the right is south on West Shore Boulevard. The recommendation from the development review and compliance staff, um, we did review the application, and we found the request inconsistent with the City of Tampa Land Development Code. Please reference findings by the Transportation Development Review, um, relating to the inconsistency findings. In the event City Council does approve this request, um, and the waivers listed in your staff report, there are minor modifications that are required on the, the revision sheet, um, between first and second reading. And if you would, please include that revision sheet in the ordinance reading. Um, should you have any questions, planning staff, as well as natural resources and transportation are available for any questions.
Do you have any questions for the gentleman? All right, hearing none, continue on, I believe the applicant is on, is it Mr. Cohen or Mr. Mechanic?
Mr. Mechanic, he's got to turn on his.
Yeah, you're muted, sir.
Okay, all right, we, sorry, uh, Mr. Chairman and council members, my name is David Mechanic, uh, here on behalf of the applicant, um, the Embassy Suites. I have with me Randy Cohen, uh, planning consultant, um, and we, we will try to be brief, Ryan did a very thorough report. I would just state for the record that we are prepared to make all of the, uh, changes that are, are required by staff. Uh, as Ryan indicated, we are simply, these are relatively small changes, we are, uh, adding three thousand square feet of, uh, meeting space on the second floor of the building. And we are converting some of the suite rooms to traditional hotel rooms. Uh, and there are no changes to the external, uh, structure whatsoever. Um, at this point, I'd just like to discuss the waivers, and, and I would point out to you, the, there are ten departments that, uh, review the application, nine of whom determined that the application was consistent. The only area of inconsistency was from the Transportation Department, and they are all objections based upon the existing building, which was built in nineteen eighty-five. And certainly was, uh, permitted and approved by the City of Tampa back in nineteen eighty-five, and complied with codes at that particular time. And that, uh, essentially explains the majority of the requested waivers. Uh, waiver number one, uh, three, four, uh, six, and seven, all due to the, are due to the fact that we have an existing building that, again, was built in accordance with code. We can't change the, the parking building or the hotel's structure itself. Again, because we are just making changes to the internal aspects of the hotel. Uh, two of the waivers relate to parking, uh, we are asking for, I think, a modest reduction in the, uh, parking requirement. As well as a reduction, or I'm sorry, an increase in the number of compact spaces. And the purpose of that, uh, waiver is to minimize the number of, of, minimize the reduction of parking uh, under the waiver number two. Um, the park, uh, hotel parking, there are a number of national studies that indicate that, uh, parking in hotels, the demand for parking has gone down substantially due to the advent of Uber and Lyft, and the fact that, you know, many, uh, hotel guests now are, uh, using valet and so forth. Uh, and I have Randy Cohen here, if council desires, we can go through, uh, a discussion of the reduced parking demand. If not, we are here to answer any questions you may have.
All right, do we have any questions for the gentleman? Councilman?
Not so much a question as a comment, um, good to see you, Mr. Cohen, it's been a while. Um, I was, uh, I was reading through some of your documentation, and, and I think you're. the, uh, one of the key issues on, on, uh, this parking thing is I think you bring up, you make the point and I think it's a point that's well taken that the city of Tampa needs to revisit our parking code. Uh, I don't know when that's scheduled. I know we've talked about it. Not in terms of, well, we talked about it today in terms of downtown parking, but not in terms of our zoning code. But, uh, Mr. Cohen and his documentation points out to the fact that with Uber and Lyft and all those similar services, people are not necessarily renting cars and not necessarily parking in the hotel parking lots. Am I, am I, am I getting your drift, Mr. Cohen?
Yes, sir. Perfectly. As a matter of fact, we're looking at proposing, uh, some parking reductions in the West Shore overlay, which we're working on some amendments for that, which we'll bring to the city at the appropriate time.
I hope you, you help the city staff, uh, with our entire chapter twenty-seven, uh, code in regard to parking, um, as well because, uh, I think it's long overdue.
Thank you. Will do.
All right, anything else? All right, hearing none. Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to speak on this item? Item number eighteen. Is there anybody in the public? Any public comment? Any, uh, anybody at the convention center?
No one has registered to speak on this item.
I'm just starting your planning and development. There's no one here to speak on this item.
Thank you very much.
Move to close the item.
We have a motion from Councilmember Miranda. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Councilman Ding Felder. Any objection on closing this public hearing? All right, uh, hearing none by unanimous consent without any objection. The public hearing is now closed. Item number eighteen, uh, eighteen, we have a substitute ordinance. Uh, Councilmember Miranda, would you mind taking item number eighteen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. File number REZ twenty dash thirty-five. Move the substitute ordinance be presented for first reading consideration ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of five 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 Northwest Shore Boulevard in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification PD planned development hotel or motel or PD planned development hotel or hotel, providing an effective date. The petitioner, uh, has complied with the comprehensive plan and, uh, the proposed development is shown on the site promotes or encourage to develop that is appropriate with the location, character and the compatibility of the surrounding neighborhood. The purpose, uh, used for promote is efficient and substantial that use of the land and for infrastructure. As far as the waivers are concerned, in section twenty-seven dash one thirty-nine four, the design of the proposed development is unique and therefore in need of waivers, A and B. The waivers requested will substantially, uh, interfere with or injure, will not, will not interfere with or injure the rights of others whose property would be affected by the waivers.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Citro. Roll call vote.
Vieira?
Yes.
Yes.
Ding Felder?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Citro?
Yes.
In Manis Kako?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be held on November fifth at nine thirty AM.
Thank you very much. Uh, we are now at almost seven thirty and number nineteen is next. Which will be, which will be long. We have a significant amount of public comment. Let's take a recess for fifteen minutes and we will begin again at seven forty-five. Please do not log out. Please do not do anything of the sort. Just mute yourselves and we will, uh, reconnect here at seven forty-five.
And council, you'll also have the ability to turn off your cameras.